All the work sessions are ordered. One item on the agenda, any changes to the agenda first of all.
Motion approved.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Once again, we're going to deal with the matter of the historic clerk's office renovation update. Mr. Kane, welcome back. I'm sure you're thrilled to be here.
With a historic project.
There's a lot of historic about this. Maybe hysterical too.
So if you recall, we're in the process of putting together the project to convert the historic clerk's office to house economic development. Initially, we went down the road of Wiley Wilson. They created a cost estimate. It was rather large and expensive, around eight hundred thousand dollars. We switched gears, came back around, and decided that we're going to work keeping the layout similar to what is there and to work with Mr. Crozier on that design. Rose and I have worked for the past several weeks and kind of narrowed it down. We worked with Abbey Construction out of Freysburg, who has a contract with U M W for services specifically like this. I sent out earlier this week a cost breakdown of the different, some different options, but the overall base cost was one hundred twenty-one, just under one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. That's for the building modifications and renovations. The fire panel that would be required is twenty-five thousand dollars, and then miscellaneous furniture, desks, chairs is seventy-five hundred for a total base cost of two hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred dollars. There were some options we wanted to look at. First was resetting and repurposing those fireplaces, so basically pulling them off, we threw out the walls and reinstalled those. Those were, that was, that was a cost of ninety, sixty-nine thousand, hundred dollars. We could demo the fireplaces, make those corners right angles, ninety-degree angles rather, get more usable space. That was thirty-eight hundred dollars. No charge to just take off the mantelpieces and reinstall with drywall. Finished the rear area. That was initially proposed to do in two phases, but we did have a estimate to go ahead and do the project as a complete of the whole structure, and it was only a cost difference of around ten thousand dollars, ninety-eight hundred to be exact. Mr. Crozier wanted to investigate using ductless splits versus a traditional split system. There was a six hundred dollar cost savings, but we would also have to come in, overcome the challenge of outside air requirements for commercial spaces. So we would end up putting more money into trying to get outside air, hold in condition that outside air. So we elected not to go with that landscaping, not including the pavers, so shrubs, bushes, trees, things like that, twenty-five hundred dollars. And then money to repurpose the mantelpieces if we choose to take them off to incorporate them in the design somehow to keep some of the store elements to building, we get two thousand dollars. So given all those options, after meeting with Mr. Crozier, the recommended options were B, demo the fireplaces, C, finish the rear area, E, include the landscaping, and F, and repurpose the mantelpieces. So the overall cost estimate is two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, five, two hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, ten percent contingency of twenty-seven to fifty for a total project budget of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Anybody want me to stop, go back?
Just a couple of things real quick. You have the C I P funds would be for the roof, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you would also be doing the roof within this project?
Yes, that's, that's included in the base proposal is replacing the roof.
And then also, as far as demoing the fireplaces, it would be removing them from where they're at, but reusing them probably in the back room of the building. Some sort of aesthetic, you know, for a table or something, use them as the base for that, not throwing them out or anything, but using them in another place in the building.
Help me, help me line up the numbers. The bid document from Abbey Construction had slightly different numbers. At least so far, I haven't been able to line them up.
Chairman, I think basically you can disregard what Abbey's original bid price was. That was before all of these additions, changes, and deletions.
Okay.
Well, so what I did was I incorporated the options that we discussed with Mr. Crozier. Went back to Abbey Construction, had them do a proposal to include the options that we chose. Obviously, that doesn't include furniture, landscaping, and repurposing the mantelpieces. So the bid from Abbey Construction includes options, B, demo the fireplace and re, excuse me, repurpose, or completing the rear portion, so, which was ten, that's ninety-eight hundred dollars. So options B and C are included in the Abbey Construction quote that I sent. And if I'm not out.
But not the furniture?
Not the furniture, that's an additional cost.
But it does include the fire panel? Or is that, is that?
No, the fire panel will be a separate contract.
That's separate, okay. That's, then I think I can make the math work if I do that and add, yeah, okay. All right, I got you. So it's, it's one from column A and two things from column B, and I get to that number.
Yeah, I apologize.
I'm with you.
I got, I got the proposal Monday.
No, 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 that's fine. I just, I got a little bit lost in trying to.
I apologize for not making that clear.
No, that's all right.
So I do want to touch on a few things. So initially, we did an asbestos and lead survey, so we found lead throughout the whole structure. So the course of action to remediate that is to encapsulate everything. So all the paint and surfaces are going to be covered in some way or another, mostly with drywall. The asbestos was found in two areas, so floor adhesive, so we're going to take all that up and bake that, and on the window glazing, so we are going to be replacing the windows with a fixed paint window there that it's going to look similar to what's in place already. But it's going to be a modern composite window, it's not going to be vinyl, it's going to be composite. So if you get real close to it, you're going to, you're going to know it's a newer, modern window, but walking by, you're not going to notice unless you really look at it. And the other, the other thing I want to kind of talk, discuss a little bit more is the sewer line. So we did a dye test with the town, and it does go to sewer. So we know it goes out and it ties into the new courthouse. Last Friday, I wanted to take it a little step further and cover all my bases, so we shot a camera down there. It's all intact, but it's an, it's an old sewer line. There is a chance that we could do all this work, get everything hooked up, six months down the road, we can have issues. That's not likely, in talking with my plumber, he didn't seem to think it was something.
What material is the, is it cast?
Yes, yes, cast. So we, we did shoot a camera down there, it's intact, there's no roots, there's no breaks, it's just, it's been abandoned, it's been sitting for, for a while.
If there are any problems, what, how much of the new work would have to be rebuilt?
I didn't get into that, I, I wanted, that's one thing I wanted to talk about. I don't have a number for that, so the guarantee is to replace the sewer line, to tear everything up outside.
How long, how long is that dip line?
What's that?
How long is the, the existing cat, the, it's called dip, ductile iron pipe?
Um, I think it's about a hundred feet, and then it ties into newer stuff when the courthouse was, the new courthouse was built.
That's interesting, okay.
So it, we, we did shoot a camera, it's the older pipe, and then you see where it transitions to where it's newer pipe, to where they tied into the new courthouse, and it goes through the new courthouse and on the other side. So it's certainly a number I can get, I can work with a plumber, I can work with Abbey Construction and get a number to replace all of that.
I wasn't so much worried about that, I was just saying, if we went with it and two years downstream, the sewer line fails, how much are we, how much are we going to have to tear up?
Well, three days a week, they're hanging out of order sign on bathrooms and kitchen, you know, they'll be fine.
The question is, would it endanger the courthouse? Are those lines, the new lines connected under the courthouse, or are they completely exterior line?
No, they're under the courthouse, so, but the ones in the courthouse are fifteen years, they're the newer, fifteen years, roughly.
An old one, the old lines come from basically the front end of the.
Correct, they go out, they, they come out of the clerk's office towards the old courthouse and turn back, kind of step down into the session.
So most of that's outside, I mean, outside of the building. So if you had to do a replacement, you're not talking about tearing the other building apart.
No. So, so the way I, the, the cost is going to be about the same whether we do it now versus we wait, we're not getting into the building, again, we will be doing exterior site work, so it's something, it's not going to be a difference now or ten years from now.
Are you, you, would, would you propose that we piggyback onto the Mary Washington contract, or is this be a separate procurement, or?
Yeah, we would, we would ride the Mary Washington contract, and that's what the pricing's based off of, so.
So no bidding or any of that?
No bidding, we would just execute the contract.
Is everybody, okay. Tom, you okay with that too? Okay. That sounds doable. So I guess the question comes down to either money and wind, or money and/or wind.
My thought process had been to program it into the C I P.
Which is underway.
Yes.
With the development, with the new C I Ps underway.
Right. If anyone else would like to do it sooner, I have no issues with that, but.
How long are those prices good for?
The current quote is, pull it up here, I think it's twelve weeks, but obviously, I can, I can talk to them and see how long, if we're talking next year's C I P, I can ask them to see.
If, if, if the board would include this in a programmed item for the next year's C I P, as soon as that funds would be available would be July first, it puts it on almost ten, ten months off. I think they, we got everybody moved out above, upstairs about a year ago, it was just about a year ago. So right now, as you all know, working in the train station is not the most optimum place for folks. You know, one of the things, if there may be another, a half step would be to include it, program it in next year's C I P, but advance it and kind of front fund it in the spring. Or I think if you give Ms. Bradley and I an opportunity to look at the undesignated general fund balance, the capital projects.
I wouldn't give anybody that opportunity, including myself.
Or, or other, or other, other sources, so that we can come back to you.
What is the plan, again, remind me on what the, the latest plan was in terms of the use of the building? What are we putting in there?
Economic development and tourism.
Economic development and tourism?
Yes, sir.
And we still feel that it's, the space we have is going to be adequate for that for a number of years?
Yeah, I think, at least from what I said, and I think in talking with Phil, Rose, and Lori, that, that that would be a three-person place, maybe a fourth, an administrative person at some point in the future, far, far future. But for now, I think the idea of co-locating all three, I think that's generally been the agreement of everyone to have all three in one space.
Well, it seems like to me, we need to go ahead, if we're going to do it, let's go ahead and do it, is where I would come down. If we're going to do it, let's go ahead and do it.
I have no problem with that.
We've talked about it for five years now, longer than that, really.
Yeah, quite honestly, if it had been done a number of years ago, it would have been in better shape.
We'd have to worry about it.
We wouldn't have to worry about it, it'd already be there. I have no problems with that, I'll make a second to that, provided reasonable.
Why, why don't we do this, if, I, I want to time out and let Glenn and I look and come back to you with a source of funds for the next meeting, and if you all agree with those sources of funds or some, something else, then we, we can go forward.
The, I thought I'd seen this, the proposal does say, "And is deemed withdrawn if not accepted by the owner within thirty days." Now, you say you may be able to deal with that, but that's, as written, that's what it says.
You can write it.
So when's that?
Thirty, thirty-eight.
Well, it's either dated April or, or August, or September, I can't tell what it is.
This proposal, this proposal is a, is a Monday.
Yes, please.
I thought it said four, four, that's why I said it didn't, it wasn't the current, but then I realized it was.
Those are nines?
Nines, yes, so.
Yeah, so this, so we're good until next month.
Well, we'll have this on the September twenty-fourth.
Let the courts determine whether it's four or nine, huh?
Good luck, yeah.
That's, I think that's a good, a good plan.
Send to the board. Thank you, Aaron and Rose, I made quite a bit of time into this. And just about a four hundred thousand dollar savings is a little better.
We are finished, anybody have a motion that we adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ready, okay. Let's call the meeting to order, please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Special presentations and awards, service awards.
Chairman, as you're making your way, we have two employees to recognize, one of which is, is here. Chairman members of the board, I'm pleased to recognize Christopher Locker. He's a deputy with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, and he's being recognized for a ten year service award. Another employee to be recognized who couldn't be with us today is John Jeffrey, he's a five-year service award, and he's with a collection tenant at one of our centers. I know Aaron will work to get him. Thank you, that's all the service awards.
Yes. Our other special presentation is in citizen recognition for the litter control, and Jason, I think you're going to present that, it's on the table there, come up, tell us about it, bring.
All right, I was going to do a little introduction.
Sure.
All right, so, good evening, I'd like to introduce Mr. Tim Gurley. Mr. Gurley has set an example in the community through his efforts to create a cleaner in Orange County. His cleanups on Governor Almond and Zora Road have been noticed and appreciated by his neighbors, who reached out requesting that the county acknowledge his good work. He has also attended a litter control meeting and provided citizen insight and input in that regard. It is fitting that he should be recognized tonight, and I hope it encourages others to undertake similar goals.
Fantastic. The certificate is over there, if you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You do a great job out there, Mr. Gurley.
Thank you.
Definitely noticed.
Okay, consider agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business, order of contract for petroleum products, Amanda.
Good evening. In front of you, we have M M O two award contract for petroleum services. In August, we released a bid for qualified firms to submit bids for petroleum products, including gasoline, glycerol for diesel, heating oil number two, and propping for multiple departments in Mount County. We received a total of five responses. After reviewing the responses, the apparent lowest responsive bidder for all four products was Culpeper Petroleum in southern states. We would like to award a contract for a one-year, the option to renew for four additional one year terms.
Okay. Any questions, Amanda?
I have one comment. Make sure that all of our tanks are very, very clearly labeled for gasoline and diesel. Prince George County, Virginia, is suffering right now for a very expensive mistake. Their contractor put diesel in the gasoline and gasoline in the diesel, and the entire fire rescue fleet in Prince George County is out of service currently.
Whoa.
And they're saying anywhere from three days to a week before they can get all the apparatus cleaned out and everything, so just make sure that they're very well labeled.
Luckily, we already work with Culpeper Petroleum, so hopefully, we won't have that problem.
I hope not.
There's always the new driver.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
I would move that we approve.
A motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. New old business or Department Director Constitutional Officer reports, county attorney report?
A quick matter, Mr. Chairman, I have a one-page addendum here that is designed to add the Orange County broadband authority to the lease and right-of-way agreement that we have with the town. And so what I need is a motion authorizing the chairman to sign on behalf of the board of the county.
So moved.
At first and a second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. County administrators report, subdivision ordinance amendment. My goodness, what a fast stack of paper.
Well, this was, this was supposed to be informative.
Well, the first twelve pages were.
They're the glaze.
The glaze is right.
Mr. Foster and I conspired.
It was only what, eighty pages?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you, as we've been progressing over the last number of years, with core fiber optic network, you all have discussed over that same time about mending the subdivision ordinance to address fiber optic easements and conduit installation for new subdivisions. I'm not going to go and read my report, that probably stands for itself.
Thank you for that.
I, I think, in my mind, it really boils down to if consideration is given to fiber optic service or conduit service to new subdivision is similar to roads, public roads, public water and sewer service, stormwater management facilities that serve some purpose to enhance value, give, create public, you know, ends, so to speak, of subdivisions of, of communities, then fiber optic and all the things that broadband can bring can do, do the same. That would be essentially the underlying po, policy of treating fiber optic service for new subdivisions, just as you would for public roads, water, sewer, electricity, not so much for telephone service anymore.
I guess that, that actually brings in, one of the questions that I had in going through here is, you know, at what point do we, you know, encourage it versus require it? You know, just a couple of thoughts that we, we do have for subdivisions over, I believe the number's forty lots, we require preliminary plan. That could be a trigger, I'm not suggesting that it is, but it could be subdivisions in the G W O P area or part of the master planning there, it could, it could fit there as well. I, I'm concerned that we can't make it require everywhere because somebody putting three or four houses, that's, you know, fifteen miles from the nearest backbone, is probably going to raise an argument unjustifiably. So, so we do have to have some ground rules as to, it seems to me, as to how we apply this, and it's pretty easy to talk about the upper end from a size standpoint, where you start backing off. I know a lot of communities make it mandatory, but these, these are suburban-type settings most, not, not.
In proximity to the existing network, I think is going to be a real consideration. I, I don't know, Mr. Foster, let me loose if you want to come up.
I think the only thing, if you're looking at a major subdivision, is automatic, and that, I think we ought to get to the point of requiring now.
Right, I think we could, that, that's one I think that's a pretty clear, it's already defined and established.
Well, we're required to have public water and utilities anyway, so.
Right, right.
All new subdivisions in the G W O P area are required to connect to public utilities.
And that might be the, the triggering, if there's, if it, if it triggers a public water and sewer requirement, either because of a major subdivision or in the G W O P, then that's one way of, you know, having, describing a policy.
Because if you have, and look at the areas in the county that are available to public water and sewer, and you got a lot of them that are not, and some of those would be close to the core network, but not a lot of them, so I suspect that a developer, if he's close to the core network, he's going to be putting in a bunch of homes. I think his marketing, well, it seems to me, any, any sizable development is, is going to be near the core network. I mean, we're going to have the core network on, on virtually all the major roads.
Yeah. It could also be very similar to our street requirements, our road requirements.
Or if it, if it's underground electric service, that's the other possible triggering mechanism, that if you're, if you're digging to put in underground electric service, you might as well put the conduit in there. So there, I mean, I think we have some work to do to figure out where we want to go with this, but, and maybe we decide, as you suggested, till we, we take this sort of through an evolutionary path. Some of the calls are pretty easy to make now, like a major subdivision or in, in G W O P, you could start with that. And then as we roll out the, the backbone and, and the like, refine it to include, if there's underground utilities, then that triggers it, or, or the things like that.
Based on, if we get these vat requirements, there's plenty areas that would have the fiber drip real close, so you could get down almost to a, a single house being built, that it would be a good requirement, so. Lewis, is there any particular number of customers that triggers something of doing it in subdivision that are not pass-bys on a, on a major, on a roadway?
I mean, my thought is that probably ten or fifteen is a smaller subdivision, it's probably going on internet. I mean, it's a, generally, if it's a three or four split, it's probably a family.
What, what size can you, can you justify a cabinet, for example?
Right.
Well, when you do a, put a cabinet in, you generally can serve probably five hundred, six hundred from a distance, you know what I'm saying, it's according how you split the fiber where it's at, located.
Five, six hundred feet.
But my question is, for us customers, you serve five, six hundred, a thousand, according to how many fibers you got coming in and out of the cabinet to serve? You realize this, you've got one fiber coming out of distribution, you split that, say one by thirty-two, so one fiber can go into thirty-two homes. You got another fiber, so you see the multiple plier there, if you do a hundred fibers, you understand, it multiplies like that, but also is, what I've talked around is, another consideration is if they're the smaller ones, if we eventually want them to pay for a one-time charge if we don't get vat grants, is maybe if we provided the conduit as an option to these smaller folks, if they're bearing the lines to go ahead and put it in, or if we could put it in before. or if we could put it in before they, we have access before everything starts. I mean, ultimately, anytime you put it in the ground, you pull fiber through it later on, you're going to save money. That's, I think that's what Brian was trying to get to. How do we save money to lower the construction costs to get, connect these folks, our citizen business, to the network? It's easier when you can trench it versus having to board.
Well, virtually all new construction, they're putting underground power to you now, aren't they?
I mean, there's exceptions.
Except for infill, I think that's true. If there's a power line there to pull already.
But if you're looking, I was looking at the ordinance, and it says, you know, anything near a public right-of-way, new stuff, it needs to be, the electrical needs to be underground.
What percentage of electric are y'all running above ground now?
Probably somewhere near about fifty percent. It depends upon if we need to get a distribution line to an area. Of course, in most cases, all of that's overhead, but once we get to the subdivision, it all depends upon the developer and what that developer wants, or what the ordinance indicates. And that's what the developer's going to do, whatever the ordinance indicates.
That's why, in the case where they're, either the developer wants to, or the ordinance requires that the electric utilities be underground, then it makes sense to. One time they did that with the phone, I don't think you do too much of that anymore because I remember thirty years ago, the argument of how deep is deep?
That's right. Of course, they would have to put it so many feet away from or away from the power line.
Right, right, right. Well, I think that's the point is, I don't believe it can be in the same trench. You wouldn't want it in the same trench, and the fiber doesn't want to be in the same trench, so it's.
They put them close by each other, which, you know, they get watered up, you'd be, but if it's, it's close.
Don't imagine their standards for separation between that water and sewer lines, so all have their standards for separation.
Well, I mean, I think it's a, it is, it's a policy area that a lot of communities have moved forward with. And it's one I think we should consider.
Definitely.
I looked at some of the examples where they're talking about replacing roads and stuff like that. I'm not sure I want to go, would want to go that far with some of the infill in terms of requiring, okay, if you're going to replace the water line, you need to put in the fiber optics conduits or things like that. I think that's pushing a little hard.
Yeah. Louis, how much is a conduit a foot?
Last quote I got was like bits and foot.
Personally? I don't see a problem with any new construction. The reason being is every real estate agent out there has been championing the bid to sell internet. You know, say, Orange County's got internet. Fifty cents a foot for the material, if they're already out there putting in drain field and everything else, you have a trencher or an excavator on site.
Let me, that may be a good, you know, if we get over the thing that this provides a value and it provides a ability to extend, ready extension into new subdivisions. I think Louis and I have talked about this, it really comes down to whether you have the developer do it, manage it, put it into certain specifications, just like the roads, our private road standards are to a certain extent, and water and sewer utilities. Or broadband authority uses its contractor and its own forces and then bills or charges the subdivider. I think one of the things that Louis and I were, and I know Stephanie's been involved in procurement, there are not that many fiber optic installers out there. In fact, when we bid this out, we only had one local one. The rest of them are gypsies. And so until kind of, until the business services of fiber optics installation gets to the point where we have resident companies, broadband authority may want to do this and as a chargeable item of condition of approving the subdivision. We do this with bonds for the roads and things like that, so there's a.
But electrical contractors can do it as well. They have, you know, they do.
They've got all the equipment.
They don't do your lines, but they do lines all the time between them.
Well, actually, they do their lines.
Well, you sub a lot of your lines.
Yes, yes, we sub underground out to a local contractor in each one of our regional offices. And so that's how we get our underground in. We do a little bit of it if we need to do emergency items and stuff like that, but majority of it is contracted out.
So I'm showing my ignorance, so the ability for electrical contractor to put the conduit in is no difference than?
It's a conduit.
Yeah. It's, I think what there's a scarcity of, what there's a scarcity of is people who want to go out and do large, large, you know, like county-wide type projects, but.
Right. Or splicing and things like that, they don't do much of that. Although I, in conversation with Louis, I think, you know, we could help through Germana and other places encourage some splicing certifications and create a, help create a team out there to do those kind of things. There's lots of pieces to this. The question is, do we wait till we get the perfect ordinance, or do we do it incrementally and start?
I think we probably can define some things, like the GWAP area, places where you got water and sewer, places that are even, you know, within reasonable distance of the core network and say, let's go ahead with that. And then, basically, it gets installed and turns over to the broadband authority, who takes care of operating, because the developer doesn't want to be in the business of managing that.
They don't want to do anything beyond the conduit.
That's right. They'll put it in and be done with it.
We would also, I maybe have to come up with a specifications requirements because of where the handholds go, if there's an easement, because they're going to have to provide an easement for the conduit, a separate easement distinct from the other easements. That's all part of it, I mean, those.
Well, that's the other step you have to take is that the broadband authority or someone would have to, as part of the site plan approval process, identify where the connection point's going to be.
It's just like anything else, water, sewer, electrical, getting it properly mapped with appropriate easements is just going to be, that's part of the technical stuff that we have to make sure we're doing properly.
Right. There's a plating, you plat the easements, the easements will be granted to broadband authority as part of the process.
RSA has been living in Lake of the Woods without knowing where all the lines are.
So I guess what I'm hearing with the board is that rather move to do something with major subdivisions now and those subdivisions that would be in the GWAP. Unlikely we'd have major subdivisions outside of GWAP, but we could. And those would be the two thresholds, and then.
Well, public water, public or community water.
Community, a community water.
Which is public.
And then you could have individual subject teams. Those would be kind of the thresholds. And then the installation of the conduit would be by the developer, according to specifications of the broadband authority, the conduit would be in an easement that would be granted on the plat to the broadband authority, and we would do bonding just like we do with.
Just like the easements they do for water and sewer and everything else. This is just one more line that we have to manage.
That way, Louis?
What we do is submit plans, we can actually look at them and look at the number of homes and say, this is where we're going to put, we know exactly what our area is going to be.
It'll have a lot way out.
One more reviewer on the plan review is all of it.
Yeah, I think that, that, a piece of the ordinance would have to require the broadband authority to be one of the reviewers.
Just like RSA does a review.
Yeah, we would fold the broadband authority into this amendment, like all the other infrastructure items that would be a part of the plating process.
I guess the only question is, we talked a little bit about the underground electric and or phone. If there's underground utilities, does that trigger this requirement? Regardless of the other, the size of the subdivision and the other considerations. That one's getting.
If you're already in there, you might as well. I think that there's going to be a number of things we want to add to the list that trigger it. And I think the best way to do is start the list, and then we'll add to it as we go along and it occurs that, yeah, this should be on there too.
Yeah, I mean, we've probably got some significant developments that are going to be on track pretty soon.
I mean, I'm not even sure that major subdivision is even a good, but what is major subdivision? Is that?
Forty or more.
Forty or more?
They require preliminary plan, right.
Well, that's not, no, there's, if you're subdividing, it's not forty, is it?
We're talking about the subdivision ordinance definition, when you're required to submit a preliminary plan. That trigger is forty.
Okay, but there's a much lower trigger.
Yeah, I don't think we even use that term anymore. Not the way it was once used, at least. Because it used to trigger roads and all sorts of other things. I think we now just have a number.
The forty is a state law issue on the, we can't require preliminary plan.
We still have major and minor subdivisions, do we not?
I don't, I think, I think not, but, but I'm saying that.
I'm looking it up right now.
Yeah, well, there's, we don't need to all look it up, or we'll flood. We'll need to get some repair work done.
Because there's still, you still have road, things that are.
I think we just want the numbers, though. I think it's just numbers, we don't, we don't use the adjective.
No, we dropped the minor and major.
That's, that's my recollection.
With the last update.
Well, I think it needs to, okay, let's drop, let's drop back. I think we need, the threshold needs to be much lower than forty.
No, no.
For the purposes of what we're, of what we're talking about here.
I agree, I'm just saying that there's, there's already a threshold defined that requires a preliminary site plan, and that number is by state law forty. And we, that would be an easy one to put in there right away.
Preliminary, fifty in ours.
Yeah.
But if you have water and sewer or any other underground utilities, that would pick up the twenty or the ten.
What is the trigger for a state road if you're doing a subdivision?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Then, I think it needs to be no more than that. I could even argue it should even be less, because I don't think we necessarily need to tie this to roads or whatever. I mean, I think this is kind of a standalone thing, but it definitely shouldn't be.
I'd like to start at eleven, and we can go down from that. But I agree with Mr. Johnson. We need to keep the number low.
Yeah.
Because.
It's better to have it underground and not using.
This is not going to be a significant, for a developer, this is not going to be a significant cost. I don't think we should be requiring the individual homeowners, who might have a, might be two thousand feet off of the road. I don't think we should be requiring that they have to do it, because that could, that could wind up costing.
Well, the other way to do that, the other way to do that, then at eleven, you're requiring a V dot road.
Right.
So if it's a V dot road serving the subdivision, that, that's a trigger. And that number is eleven.
Then they got a right-of-way.
It's what we used to call a major substance.
For a while, it was eight.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, for a while, the V dot road was triggered at three.
Three, yeah.
Let me go ahead and open up a rabbit hole for you guys to start going. Right now, preliminary plat is required for any subdivision which simultaneously or via phasing creates fifty-one or more lots. A subdivider at their option may submit a preliminary plat for fifty or fewer lots.
I would like to see the, our minimum be the state road.
The eleven. Now, one of the things that will happen is that unless it's zoned residentially, there would be a rezoning process to get up to these numbers, if the lots are less than two acres. And so, one of the things that could happen.
You could have eleven without it being rezoned.
Right, right, if, but if they're less than two acres.
Well, they couldn't be.
Unless they're rezoned, is what I'm saying.
Well, unless they already exist.
Or they already exist, already zoned subdivisions, so.
You know, there's a lot of different.
There's a lot of moving pieces, because you could require.
This is more complicated than a Rubik's Cube, because there's.
And I'll go back to the number of eleven.
You could require as part of the zoning and the conditional zoning in the GWAP under plan development, a condition that the developer proffers.
Under GWAP, it's mandated.
And we can amend the ordinance that.
So I would say eleven, eleven or more houses.
Unless it's in the GWAP.
GWAP's covered.
Right.
GWAP is covered.
Mandatory in GWAP.
So eleven, as in the state road standard.
Regardless whether there's a rezoning or. Got it. That, that.
Eleven's eleven, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's.
Until we change it.
Until we change it to a different number.
Unless we decide it's actually ten and three quarters.
If we go.
And he builds, in a rural area with two-acre lots, he builds five, and then later he builds another five, and then builds another five.
Well, again, I don't think there's any one-size-fits-all answer we're going to come up here. Let's start building the list, and we'll add to it as we go along.
I think that's the right approach.
And I don't think there's going to be a lot of resistance to this, because I think that.
No, I think developers are going to be, this helps sell, this will help sell their.
This is marketing for them. And then, you know, they'll recover the additional cost in the, in the marketing.
Let me kind of go through the construct of this ordinance amendment. The purpose is, like any other public utility, that's why you're doing it, because it's required for subdivisions orderly development. Two, the next part is eleven or more lots, and then GWAP.
No, we're just going to, we're going to, we're going to build the list as we go along. So you start out building the list.
The last piece are the specifications, is that these are installed at the developer's expense. Eleven, I got it.
Don't let go of that.
Here, gentlemen, I got it. And that the specifications will be per the broadband authority specifications and bonds and all that would be posted, just like.
It's five thirty, five thirty, it's time for public comment.
And it'll require a review by the broadband authority.
Yes, sir. I think I have enough information to come back with you for a draft.
All right. Okay. We will move from my regular agenda to public comment. Did somebody check to make sure there's no one upstairs, just in case, because the elevators are out?
I have not.
Should we?
Erin.
Erin's going to take care of it.
Okay, I'll wait for your return. So if we look like we're anxious, we're anxious.
Is somebody up there, we go up there?
I guess, yeah.
If they're unable to get here.
Any board comment while we're waiting, we can start with that. And suspend.
Maplewood Cemetery outside Gordonsville is having a sign installed, and they have asked the county if we will waive the fees relative to that.
I received eleven.
They are approximately a hundred and seventy-five dollars total.
A hundred and twenty-seven dollars, a hundred and two for the building rent, and twenty-five for the zoning permit. That was the best estimate I could get right after the plans come in.
Is that agreeable? Do we need a motion on that, Tom?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I move that we waive those fees.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
One other comment, under our informational items, we had a letter from the Culpeper County Department of Development, Plan and Zone, just advising us of their public hearings on their proposed solar project. And I just wanted to say I'm glad to see that they put that out there to, so that we had information on it, unlike what's with Pennsylvania, never bothered to even say hello to us.
I looked on the GIS, and it's on the north side of, what is that, Raccoon Ford Road that runs through there? There's a, there's a power line that cuts diagonally through the property, because that's why they want to use that property. There's a transmission line.
I've actually been in contact with the Culpeper County because my constituents have called to complain.
Yes, and like I said, I'm glad that Culpeper reached out to us this way.
Yeah, good, okay. Let's, let me open the public comment period. Anyone signed up, Allison?
No, sir.
Close the public comment. Okay, back to board comment. Anything, anybody have anything else? Okay. Any questions on the information items, other than Mr. Grozer's notice? Appointments to boards and commissions? Any questions on the calendar? I saw a new calendar here, but I didn't get a chance to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I've been remiss. Can we go back to board comment?
Sure. It's a one-time offer, you understand?
It's my, my one gimme. No, I, I, we have located, the team that we have working on this project has located a new photograph of a long-ago board member. He is the first photograph I've been able to find that actually reaches back to the nineteenth century. His name was James Conway Graves. Served four years on the board, and then served four years in the House of Delegates. four years in the House of Delegates. And he married the daughter of another former board member named Johnson Barber, who was himself the son of Governor Barber, so I'll pass that down. Everybody can go look at Mr. Graves, and then on our break, I will add him to the wall of.
I think he was here earlier in some flowered shorts.
No, that was his uncle.
Oh, okay.
See, that's actually a pretty good photograph.
Yeah, it, it is. It was, the reason it's preserved is because there was a, there was a fi- five-volume set of books, and each volume was about six hundred pages, so about three thousand pages, put out in nineteen oh six called Men of Mark in Virginia. And so there would be a small biography and, and a, and a photograph of most of the, most of the men of Mark.
And where, where'd you find the book? I mean, is it, is it in the?
Well, it's, it's on, it's online. That's how I found it. They were, it's, it's in various libraries around. UVA's got a copy of it.
Sounds like somebody with too much time on their hands.
Yeah.
That's great. You've been doing a lot of research, I appreciate it.
And this gets us exactly the halfway, the halfway point. You've got pictures of thirty-sixth of the seventy, thirty, thirty-eight of the seventy-six now.
That's pretty remarkable, frankly. All right.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry I did.
No, that's right.
Sorry I had to ask for a suspension of the rule.
That was worthwhile. We'll cut you some slack. All right. Let's see, you have a new September calendar. It appears here with an EDA canceled. Anything else on that? Okay. All right. So, I'm ready to recess for closed meeting.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters: Discussion consideration of the salaries of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body; Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position negotiating strategy of public body with respect to communications tower; Discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerably, vulnerabilities and briefing by staff members thereof; Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal vice presidents, counsel concerning solid waste in the radio system; And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty-seven, lemon A one, A three, A eight, and A nineteen of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County, the CEBR, authorize discussion of four state matters in closed meeting. Need that as a motion.
So moved. I've never heard a nineteen be said.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think it's my first nineteen in seven years.
I'm curious about the solid waste in the radio system.
That's exciting.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Would we approve? Objeure something? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now, Lee.
Hey, Jim, I keep getting this stuff from you from the White House, this Crozier